Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. Beautiful summer day, and I call the meeting to order for the July 13 study session. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Duffield is currently absent.
Thank you. So we're moving on to current business. We are now going to tackle the first item, which is the clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Brenner, do you need any clarification regarding the items?
No.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Neal.
None.
Councilmember Dixon?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Blom?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Duffield is absent. Mayor Protem?
I do not.
Thank you, and I do not as well. So do we have all the kids here? Do you need to wait a little bit to get more? All right. So our stand-in then is the chief.
Thank you, Mayor Avery. Members of City Council, John Lewis, Chief of Police, and it is my honor to be here today to recognize really just a special person in the world of our police department and our Police Explorer Program and just an incredibly generous donation to our Police Explorer Post. We have, as you can see here from this photo here, a new Ford Transit passenger van used by our Newport Beach Police Department Explorer Program. Why this van is super important for this youth program is they do everything from competing in regional competitions to working different special events throughout the county, and this van is super important to get them to and from where they need to be and just a big part of our program and the success of it. And Mr. Manley, Mr. Dwight Manley, has been a benefactor of this program for many years. He donated the van that we had before, and now this is the current one that we have to replace it. The last van that he had donated to us was back in 2006, and we certainly did get a significant amount of use about it. I want to talk real briefly about our Police Explorer Program, and I know that folks here on council are very familiar with it, but it's a youth program for ages 14 to 20, and it really provides service opportunities for our folks. And whether or not they choose to get involved in law enforcement, it is a very eye-opening experience in terms of what this community is about and what community service is about. And then we also have a path towards a law enforcement career. And right now, we have Detective Mike Fletcher, who many of you know, is our lead Explorer Post advisor but was also a member of our Explorer Post many, many years ago and continues to give back. We also have a number of police recruits actually in the academy now that are alumnus of our Police Explorer Program. So we have a pipeline there of some really quality applicants, folks that are invested in Newport Beach, understand Newport Beach, and understand the way we do things here at the Newport Beach Police Department. So I'd like to ask Mr. Dwight Manley to please come up and join me for a presentation and to say a few words to council.
Good evening, Council. My name is Dwight Manley. Oh, sorry. I live in Brea now, but I lived in Newport for many years, and I had a sports agency here about 20-some years ago. And when my kids went to Harbor Day, Officer Wisnat Lloyd had come and spoke and brought up about his desire to put defibrillators in the police cars because when a person's having a heart attack or an episode, they don't really care who gets there first, they care that somebody does get there first. And as we all know, the first people to an emergency, no matter where you live, are the police. And Carl Malone and I were able to provide the defibrillators for the city, which then led to what else is important to the community. And he brought up the Explorers, which was a very important program. I didn't fully understand it then, but the van was a big deal because building camaraderie with youth and having the influence of the officers that are teaching them, whether they become officers later or not, it's very important having them together, not in multiple cars, five cars, six cars, where taking people to different things. Fast forward, Brea saw that that happened, and I did things for them with the defibrillators and then got them a van. Well, 15 years later, it was time, and Officer Fletcher, who's been fantastic to work with, has been going back and forth. This has taken, I think, over a year to finally have. But I can't emphasize enough, in these trying times, how important it is to invest in our police, but not just with graduates or adults, but with the kids, because those are, that's the AAA for the future, for the big leagues, for all of us. And I know in Brea, we're always headhunting and having to pay fees to other, to people to come to work for the police. But if you invest now in your Explorer Program, and the van is just a tool, and the chief and all the officers behind me, you can tell they care about this. It has nothing to do with how much they get paid, has nothing to do with how many hours they have to put in. They love it, and they love what comes from it. So I'm really, I feel honored to be able to donate something that actually affects lives in a positive way. I know the community will get residual benefit, but the actual people, the Explorers that get to experience this and the bond that it creates is, I think, priceless. So thank you.
Take a quick photo. Grab a check. Go, you're the expert. Okay. So our next item is a proclamation acknowledging Laura Tippett for her work with SHARE Kids. I've got a whole stack of SHARE certificates here. And so Laura, could you come to the podium and please and tell us a little something about the program?
So myself, as well as Evelyn Best, started a group called SHARE, where we're a group of women who gather three times a year, usually January, February, March, but COVID kind of messed with us this year, as it did with many things. And we pick three different organizations, businesses, or nonprofits to support in our local community, the common bond being local. And then, in addition to our programming for adults, for women to gather and support, we also plan children's events that support the same causes. So this year, we focused on anti-human trafficking, the Literacy Project, as well as Shopping Local to support our local businesses, where Mr. O'Neal made a presence and helped support us in that way as well. But today is about them and what they've done supporting their community, and I think Cassin was maybe going to share one of her favorite moments or her favorite activity of the three.
My name is Cassin, and my favorite activity was Shopping Local because it helped businesses that needed help during COVID.
Okay. And London would like to say a few words, too.
My name is London, and my favorite was shopping, too, because it just was a fun way to do it, and also it just, like, helped people, and I just liked that way because it just helps people a lot, and it's fun, too.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to read the proclamation because it's fantastic work you guys have been doing. It's tremendous. Whereas Laurel Tippett and Evelyn Best founded SHARE, which is Sisterhood, Heart, Altruism, Reach, and Empathy, which is a group of women from Laguna Beach and Newport Beach that supports locally worthy causes through education, conservation, and financial impact. Whereas SHARE members focused on the three local nonprofits this spring, which included anti-human trafficking, the Literacy Project, and Shopping Local in support of local businesses. And whereas SHARE's mission is to involve the children in learning about the community and its needs by creating children-friendly projects that support the same causes as SHARE. And whereas this year, 30 boys and girls participated in the three events, the Kindness Bracelets to support the victims of human trafficking, donating children's books to the Literacy Project, and the Shop Local Bingo Event to show the importance of shopping and supporting our local businesses. So therefore, I brad Avery, Mayor of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, to hereby recognize SHARE and the 30 boys and girls who participated in the SHARE 2021 events. And so we can meet down there and get some photos, and got these certificates.
One, two, three. And look at the mamas.
their times for the city, or they create organizations that bring good things to the city. And I have the honor now to present certificates of appreciation to outgoing board members and commissioners. And I could have Miriam Baker and Rich Legrand and Byron Jeanette and Walt Howell to come forward, and I'd just like to read a little something about each commissioner. And Miriam, I think, is outside. So if I may, Rich Legrand. Commissioner Rich Legrand was appointed to the City Arts Commission in 2019, and during his term, Commissioner Legrand helped plan and implement Phases Five and Six of the sculpture exhibit in Civic Center Park, right outside, and served on the Concert on the Balboa Peninsula Ad Hoc Committee. Most importantly, he brought his experience in the public arts initiatives and a passion for the arts to the city of Newport Beach and the Arts Commission. Miriam Baker, a gifted sculptor, longtime resident of Balboa Island, Commissioner Miriam Baker was appointed to the City Arts Commission in 2017. She served on the Art in Public Places Ad Hoc Subcommittee, which plans and implements the annual Newport Beach art exhibition and selects the work for the display in the Central Library. She also worked on Phases Four, Five, and Six of the sculpture exhibit in the Civic Center Center Park. Commissioner Baker was also deeply involved with the maintenance and preservation of public art in the city. And Brian Jeanette has recently completed an eight-year term on the Building and Fire, which began in 2003, as Chairman of the Building and Fire Board Appeals. Since 1998, Brian has served our community in a number of roles as a member of the Building and Fire Board, the Green Building Task Force, Local Coastal Plan Committee, Appeals Board, Sign Code Committee, and Economic Development Committee. Brian is an architect and president of Brian Jeanette Architecture, which he established in Newport Beach in 1974 with his wife and business partner Bonnie. And finally, Walt Howell is finishing an eight-year term on the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission. In addition to his commission service, he is currently serving in his 15th year as a Director of the Friends of Oasis Board. He has served as an elected member of the Coast Community College District for 30 years, and he also spent about three decades as Director on the Board of Friends of the Newport Coast, which helped protect nearly 80% of the coast between Newport Beach and Laguna Beach. Walt is a founding member of the Friends of the Newport Beach Animal Shelter, FONBAS, and remains active in the group. And on top of all that, he is a practicing attorney with 50 years of membership in the Orange County Bar Association. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you so much for your service to this city. That's a lot of meetings, isn't it? Okay, the next item on our agenda is a presentation about the BeWell Orange County Mobile Crisis Intervention Program.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Carol Jacobs, your Assistant City Manager. I wanted to give you a brief update about our homeless efforts, and then I want to introduce BeWell. We started and launched our homeless efforts in March of 2019. Our staff includes a homeless liaison police officer, homeless liaison coordinator, an interdepartmental rapid response team, CityNet, which is our social services provider in a partnership with Costa Mesa for our emergency shelter beds. We have permanently housed 65 individuals since September of 19. Those folks are no longer homeless. In addition, we have placed 86 folks into temporary shelters. To accomplish this, CityNet, our social services provider, has had over 3,500 outreach contacts with homeless individuals to try to get them off the streets and into shelter. There is one aspect of the homeless issue that we haven't addressed and we'd like to address better, and that's why we've invited BeWell here today, that is dealing with homeless individuals who have an addiction or mental health issues. To determine whether or not someone is mentally ill, a trained mental health professional is needed. While we work well with county health, we're looking to expand that effort today with your approval. Should you approve this concept, we would go out to RFP, and we would recommend using our CDBG funds, our emergency funds, to fund a kind of a pilot program. With that, I would like to introduce Marshall Moncrief, who is the Chief Executive Officer of BeWell Orange County, and he will explain the services that they can provide to the community. Marshall.
Hi, Mayor, City Council. I'm Marshall Moncrief, and I'm with BeWell Orange County. And there's some slides up here on the Mobile Crisis Program, but before I dive into that, I want to just spend just a couple of minutes talking about BeWell Orange County and set the context for what's happening and who some of us are that are involved in BeWell Orange County. For a long time, I was overseeing all addiction and mental health services for Hoag Hospital, and so I know the community of Newport Beach really well. This is my home away from home. I live a stone's throw from Newport and Huntington Beach, and so this community is very close to me. I can tell you, Hoag does number-one world-class care in a lot of areas. However, Hoag has first place in an area that we don't really want to be in first place. Of all the emergency departments in Orange County, Hoag Hospital has the highest volume of homeless, mentally ill, and substance-use patients that come in. That's not where we want to be. It's a real strain on the system, and particularly for the people that are struggling, it's not the right environment. At one point, I also oversaw all of the hospitals for both Hoag and the St. Joseph System, which includes Mission, St. Joe's, and St. Jude, and the two Hoag hospitals. The reason I share that information is I've had a front-row view into the lack of a mental health system across this county and the impact of that. So while Hoag is in first position on the highest volume of patient admits for homeless, mentally ill, and substance use, collectively, the emergency departments see 50,000 people a year for those same cluster of services, and the vast majority of them don't need to be there. Modestly, an admit to an ER is about $2,000. So if you've got 50,000 people coming to the ER, each one's $2,000, as a community, we have the great benefit of spending about $100 million a year for bad care in the wrong environment and straining a system. And so BeWell Orange County evolved from the hospital community, reaching out to one another. We're very competitive in every other area of healthcare, but in this space, reaching out to one another to say, we need to do something better together than we've done in the past, we need to do this in partnership with community, both county and cities, and we need to build a mental health system that looks like Hoag but is across the whole county and is created by all of us. We're three years into this thing. We just finished our first mental health campus. It's in the city of Orange. We're tracking on our second one, which will start construction next year in the city of Irvine, and there will be a third probably two years from now. If we build three of these campuses, and each one can treat about 15,000 to 20,000 people, we'll put a material dent in the 50,000 that are going into ERs right now. However, if we just build those campuses, and that's all we do, they will fill up, and then they will be limited in their impact. So those campuses have to be part of a comprehensive ecosystem, and that ecosystem needs to include mobile teams that can go out into community and meet the mental health crises where they occur, in community, whether that's at the school, or outside the store, or at someone's faith community, or in their living room, or in the park with somebody who's struggling with homelessness. This thing needs to be responsive to that. In the same way that the ERs have carried unfairly the weight of all of these problems, law enforcement has also unfairly carried the weight of these problems as the first point of contact. So this mobile program is designed to support law enforcement, to support emergency services, and to support the community's health and well-being in attending to the calls that law enforcement has had to deal with for so long without the proper resources or support. So that's what this is about. And I wanted to share a little bit about that background so you know who's looking at doing this. It's all of the hospitals in Orange County unified with Hoag on Lead Point helping to drive it, and so that's who we are. I do have some slides, and I thought I would just spend a minute. I know, Carol, you queued me up for about seven minutes, so I want to be conscious of the time it takes, and so I'll try to do sort of the brief version here, and if there's more discussion to be had, I can be available anytime to you all. But what is it? I'm going to click into that. So this mobile response model is based on the success of a model that emerged out of Oregon, of all places, called Kahoots. I've got a daughter who was going to college in Oregon, so in my visits up there, I got to know this program really well, and it has now received national recognition as it's quietly been functioning in Oregon for over 30 years. It's a pretty simple model where you have a two-person team, a crisis counselor and an EMT, that go out in a vehicle, much like the Explorer van that you just saw, a Ford Transit vehicle, and they're responsive to the calls in community. When a call comes in through the 911 or the non-emergency system, the dispatch team is trained to triage this in the same way they triage every other call. The dispatch team today has three tools: fire, police, or an ambulance. We give them a fourth tool for mental health, homeless, and addiction-related crises to deploy, and that's how this works. So quickly, on the process, this, well, I just said this one. Let me go into who receives the services, and pardon me for the way this is structured. It gives you a little bit of a whiplash. So here's the team. I wanted you to see a picture of the Kahoots team up there. And so this is a Transit van, as I described. It is positioned to take people where they need to go. In some cases, the people that we respond to would need to go to the BeWell campus in Orange and get mental health treatment. In other cases, we would need to take them to the shelter that you're sharing with Costa Mesa. In some cases, we just need to take them to the medical clinic and get their prescription refilled so we can reduce their psychosis and get them to agree to care. So this is a whatever-it-takes model, where we do whatever is needed to be done to meet the needs of that individual. We're hyper-flexible to the community dynamics and the culture of any given community, and so knowing Newport Beach the way I do, and I have a good sense of this community, having worked at Hoag so long, we would adapt this by the direction of Chief Lewis and the EMS team into how they would want us to deploy and how they would want us to interact with the community as we are there to support them. They would be a primary customer of ours in addition to the community itself. So there's a whole lot of slides here, and I'm hesitant to keep diving through them. I want to be mindful of the time. That's the overview of the program, and we're talking now with Carol and City Manager about the potential of a pilot, to see how this would function, measure the impact on relieving law enforcement EMS, and being extremely responsible to the needs of the Newport Beach community, and be a privilege to be able to work on this with you. So, yes, sir?
Questions? Ms. Dixon?
Excellent presentation. One of the challenging issues, and this is why this program's going to be important if we move forward with it in Newport Beach, in dealing with our homeless is, as Carol mentioned, there are 65 have been taken from our streets and given better living conditions in a very outstanding facility that we share with Costa Mesa. But there is that intractable issue of people who do not, refuse care and refuse to leave the public spaces. How do you deal with that? I mean, do you expect that you'll be able to, after however many 3,500 interactions, however multiple, you'll eventually convince those people that they can get, seek help and be taken care of in an appropriate, better way? Can you reach everybody?
It's a great question, and I won't send pink clouds of fluff your way. That is a very difficult population. I've worked with them for years on the front lines of the ER. I know exactly the person you're talking about. It's very difficult. And so... And so without any silver bullet magic solution to not fluff this, I can say with confidence, the benefit of this program is that these are trained clinicians who, this is all they do all day long, and more than that, they have the bandwidth, the time, to address those people necessary to create the type of relationship that gets them to ultimately agree to take, if needed, even incremental steps in toward, into care. And so we're dealing with a, a specific individual right now at the Orange Campus, and he's been to the sobering station three times in the last three days. But each time, we have been able to walk him up to the detox center, which is quite beautiful. I'd love to host you all for a tour, and he is now agreeing to stay. And so sometimes the ability to just be there and be consistent and chip away with the right team who's skilled and have the right resources, where we can give that individual a ride over to our campus, "Hey, Joe, this isn't so bad a place to be," and he gets a hug wrapped around him and sees what's possible makes all the difference. I don't want to say that's the silver bullet. I appreciate the difficulty with this population, but it can make a difference, and it does. Yeah, and we can save a lot of money along the way, because otherwise, that same person would be cycling through the ER and calling law enforcement on the hour. And so it's a cost-effective way of dealing with a difficult reality.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, a question. So switching gears from the detox center to, you know, of the mental health issue, and sometimes they go together, sometimes they don't, but if, but in the situation of someone who has very clear mental illness issues, such that they are, they are on the streets because of those issues, how does your team come alongside those folks and help them get the clinical care that they need or the medications that they need? Recognizing, of course, the discussions about civil rights, but the, and, and part of this question also is because two or three years ago, when the governor had appointed the mayor of Sacramento to, you know, lead a task force addressing homelessness in California, one of the suggestions that came out of that group that he had written about was the concept that there, there should be a, essentially a right to shelter, but at the same time, if someone chooses not to go in, that would be a sign of mental illness and therefore, you know, potential expansion of a 51-50 hold as well. So I'm not going that far, but I'm asking, in the case of someone who is clearly in a, in a position where psychiatric care or drug treatments would be helpful to get them up and off the streets, which is, I think, the goal of pretty much any homelessness program, what is Be Well doing in, on that front?
That's a, a great question. There's a couple parts to it. On, on the first piece, and, and I know Mr. Steinberg well, and, and that's a, a policy issue that's a tough one, and I'm right there with you both on the need to expand that. Build the system, have the capacity, and then hold people accountable for it. You can't camp. And so we're there. In the meantime, what is Be Well doing? We're, we are proactively reaching out into community. And so while this service would be deployed by the same dispatch team that deploys the other first responder services, we also wouldn't be waiting to be deployed. And so this, this team is out proactively connecting with that community constantly. There isn't a time where we're not connecting with that community. And there's a real difference between a scenario where someone who's struggling with homelessness has a mental illness, by default, their brain and the way they perceive things is compromised, is being responded to by a law enforcement officer, no matter how well they're trained or compassionate, they show up the way they show up. The perception of that person is such that it is disturbing oftentimes. The difference being our proactively connecting with them, putting an arm around them, tending to their wound, and in the context of tending to their wound from their diabetic illness that's been untreated, can say, "Hey, you know what? We can tell a remote in somebody to get your meds refilled right now. What do you think?" There's just a completely different dynamic that starts to unfold. Again, not a silver bullet. I won't fluff this, but it does make a difference. We are able to break down that resistance and start to make incremental interventions and get them into care in a way that previously our system hasn't been designed to do. Yeah.
Ms. Brenner?
It's nice to meet you in person after our Zoom meeting, so.
Blanket, nice to see you.
I was wondering if I could hear from Chief Lewis and get him to tell us how this could be really beneficial to our police department. I heard from you that that's really informative about the difference between your people and a police officer. But John, can you tell us how this could benefit your department?
Really, what they're proposing is, is to support us in a space that we don't have the ability to, to impact right now. And that's, and you mentioned, again, in law enforcement, we're, we're the accountability piece, right? You know, and then also when we interact with these, with these folks, when they're used to seeing us in, in their minds many times, an adversarial role, that I'm the same person that would be involved in, in taking them to jail, but then also offering them, you know, some, some help for a very personal issue that they're dealing with, it sometime is incongruent. And when the message and the resources are delivered in a different way, we believe that there will be some lasting impact there. And so this is, everything that we have, we have heard, we think that this is the, the space that can really help us make those long-term impacts on this population, and because we deal with people that are in crisis, and it is very difficult to get someone, while, while they're still in crisis, to get into a program, to, to get up and off the street. They're, they're in crisis. They're not in, in a space where they can process it. What we have the ability to do with this program is to stabilize these individuals and start having the, the, the long-term effects that will hopefully lead to better outcomes than what we're seeing now. So this is, again, it's a space that we think that is, fits with our enforcement piece, it fits with our outreach piece with, with CityNet, and it gives us the ability to, to impact on folks on a long-term and get them up off the street to where we're not continually dealing with them, either in our ERs or in our jails.
Good to know. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon?
Chief, just a quick follow-up question. I was intrigued by what Mr. Moncrief said about dealing, dealing with the people who need help and not showing up in an officer's uniform. Do you think, in the meantime, until we, if we approve this and get this moving forward, I don't know how long it's going to take, is that some intermediate step that we could do? Because I know the officer who's working, she's outstanding, obviously, but I'm just, was intrigued with that comment.
We do. We, we continue, we're doing everything that we have the ability to do, and so that's, that's going to continue. And I think that, but what, my, my point was that there's a, there's a certain limitation to what a, to what a police officer has in terms of, of training and clinical skills, and we are very fortunate that we have officers, and not just Officer Carter, but there's a number of our folks that are, that are directly impacting our homeless population that are, that have specialized training and also have the ability to, to connect with these individuals. So we're going to continue to do that, and that's never going to stop. This is just an opportunity for us to, to do it better.
Great. Any other questions from the dais? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Great, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we're moving on to the updated draft general plan housing element.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and City Council members. I'm Simone Jurdis, your Community Development Director, and with me, I have Deputy Director Jim Campbell, and over there at the work station is Senior Planner Ben Zadiva. We're back with you again to talk about the housing element. This is just an overview of everything we've heard. We've been working with you for a few months now. We've incorporated a lot of the changes from your comments, from the community's comments. This is not the final version. This is just a new draft version. Mr. Campbell's going to do a short presentation on what the changes are. We have a couple of questions for you at the end. Do you have any additional changes you would like to make? And are you comfortable with us going ahead and forwarding, forwarding the document to HCD for a mandatory 60-day comment period? With that, I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Campbell make his presentation.
Thank you, Simone. Mayor Council, Jim Campbell, Deputy Director of Community Development. Again, we're going to do a quick overview here. So this is really the third time we've been before the City Council. We were here in April, and then actually twice this month. So here we are with, we've been taking in your direction from the prior meetings, and so just as a snapshot, we, we brought to you an option B at the last meeting, which was really how we would allocate the housing units throughout the community, and so that's incorporated in the draft that we published earlier this month. It has that 1,000-unit ADU assumption that we've all been discussing, and we've changed the unit mix at Banning Ranch and Coyote Canyon, increasing those numbers. You know, we do believe it's a more equitable distribution throughout the community, and the buffers, in terms of the overall unit production, are 13% for very low-income households and 9% for moderate-income households. We've also been discussing the inclusionary housing policies, and then in the revised draft, you'll find an interim inclusionary housing policy at 15%, but we would then study that and follow it up with a more robust ordinance within 36 months of adoption. Create a policy to encourage senior housing. You see a draft policy there. The thought there is if we can get some of those types of projects coming forward, you know, possibly 100% senior affordable, we might be looking at doing fewer of, of other projects in the community over time. We did also send a letter to HCD, and that is asking for a reduction in RENA. It's really related to Banning Ranch and competing state priorities. You know, it seems as if we need to protect that property, but we also would like to put some affordable housing, so we're hopeful to get some reduction there. So there's a, a letter that we sent to the state. Now, again, as I mentioned, we have a, a new version of the document. It's in a redline, strike, or if you will, attract changes version, and that was published on July 7th. It shows you the changes from the prior draft, and that's available online at the URL that you see. So quickly, option B, those are the affordability percentages for those areas, rezoned strategy areas, airport area, West Newport, Dover, West Cliff, Newport Center, Coyote Canyon, and Banning Ranch. Those are those principal areas. So we've got the densities that were assumed, total net units for very low and low and moderate income, and then the total units on the far right-hand column. You'll also notice the 100%, I'm sorry, 1,000-unit ADU assumption, and the rezoned strategies total 61, 140 units, and then you can see the, the buffer there in the box on the very bottom, 13 and 9%. So that's incorporated within the draft that we, we have available for the public comment. We've also talked about inclusionary policies. Again, 15% inclusion. We would adopt a policy or an ordinance of some kind within the first six months or before that. We would then come in and do a final policy within 36 months. That's on page 4-8 of the policy, of the document. So we've also added a policy for 6G for senior housing, as I mentioned. Again, this is to really kind of prioritize that. We heard that comment from the community council, so if we can prioritize senior housing as one way to provide affordable housing in the community, it's also reflective of our aging population in the community, as you know, and so it's a really good fit for this community. And so it is fairly flexible, so the draft languages that you'll see is, allows for implementation in a variety of ways, and that's on page 4-25. We have a whole new appendix. This is kind of the new item. This is in support of the 1,000 units, eight, that we're proposing for accessory dwelling units within the community. And so it describes that legislation, regional actions, has the overview of the local factors to increase the production. You know, we've, we've also got the council policy to, to also spur that, and so this is in furtherance of that policy. And so hopefully, this will be satisfactory to HCD to, to justify 1,000 units over the next eight years. So we've got a couple of items that we actually put in there recently, and these are actually reflective of the council policy K4 that was adopted in March, and these are reviewing the mixed-use zones so that they can provide recommendations for change to those zones. I think the overall sense is that they haven't really performed very well, and so we're looking to change those, eliminate impediments. The other policy, again, this is again reflective of council policy K4, and that's to establish those mixed-use resort opportunities. The director did do an interpretation, and so that's also a policy that we put in the housing element, which, again, will help support additional residential opportunities in support of, also of affordable housing. So those are new policies that we've included. So with that, I'll just go through the schedule. I've highlighted where we are here. This is the City Council Study Session, July 13th. We've got a variety of different items that lead up to the adoption in January of the overall document. Again, this is a draft, as Simone had said, so what we're looking for today is to submit this to HCD for a 60-day review process. Also like to get the council's input on any additional changes that you'd like to be made. And so with that schedule in mind, we, we hope to leave this evening with your blessing to submit it to HCD for that review. That will also trigger a, a review by Airport Land Use Commission, which is really the, in, in August. And so this, this whole schedule is really predicated on getting this document to HCD within 120 days of the deadline. Deadline's October, 120 days from then is in February. We feel we can make this schedule. It's aggressive. There is an EIR and a traffic study involved with all of this, and we'll see the fruits of that later in the fall and winter. Again, we'd like to ask if there's any changes that you might want to make to the draft, and then, again, your, your blessing to submit it to HCD for that review. And Simone and I are available for any questions, and with that, we'll turn it over to you, Mayor Avery.
Thank you. If you have any questions, Ms. Dixon?
Good question. Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to go through the document. Can't find it. But I saw a reference to, in the ADU section, tiny houses. What are tiny houses?
So the tiny houses provision was in the Appendix D. We have reviewed it, and it's just, it's just another terminology for ADU, and that's something that we feel could be stricken from the document.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
If we strike that from the document, then is that leading to much larger ADUs in our community?
No, not at all. It, it is just a terminology used. So it's just a term they're using, tiny homes to be equivalent to ADUs. Our ordinance really dictates that maximum size for the ADU, so no, it doesn't.
And are we looking at any sort of an overlay for different requirements in different neighborhoods for our ADUs?
We are not. We have a current ADU program ordinance that's already been adopted. We are working on an update to be more permissive. We are planning to go to do a study session with the Planning Commission first, so we can get a little bit of their input before we finalize the ordinance. But we were looking to craft different requirements in different areas of town. We, from a staff standpoint, are not in favor of that, because it makes it very difficult to enforce. So that's what we, that's kind of our standard line, anytime anybody asks us to have different requirements. But of course, we can absolutely do it if that's what the council chooses to do.
Well, it seems like some places in our community can handle much larger ADUs than other areas can, where parking is an issue and that sort of thing. So I, it just seems like we, we can't do a blanket approach to the ADUs in Newport Beach.
So we can definitely discuss that subject with the Planning Commission, if that's okay.
Okay.
And, and try to brainstorm, is there a way to craft specific requirements for different parts of town? We can do it.
That would, that would be helpful. And then I had a couple other questions. Well, first of all, looking at the timeline, why now? Why are we submitting this in July? When the OCOG lawsuit is still pending and other cities have not submitted theirs?
So there is a mandatory 60-day review with HCD, so we do have to get it up to them. The, the question is, what are going to be those comments from HCD? And from, from a scheduling standpoint, we still need to take, get those comments back, make the amendments and changes, and get through our public noticing period and our 45-day public comment period. What we're concerned about, if we wait too long, the changes that we have to make may be so dramatic that it's going to throw our traffic modeling off, it's going to throw our EIR off. That's a, that's a potential fear for us. We, from a staff standpoint, love to get this as soon as possible up to HCD, so we can know what the changes are, what those comments are. Do we need to include, incorporate more policy comments? It takes time for us to make those changes, and depending on those changes, may or may not affect our EIR process.
Are you concerned that if the word on the street is that they may delay this by six months, or if the lawsuit is successful, that we would then have already submitted our, our housing element and we could have taken a lot more time?
And, and that's, that's a very good point. We, we think from the extension of time, the, the only way to extend the time is either through executive order by the governor, or the legislature will pass a bill to extend the time, because it is statuette in state law as far as the deadline. We, we don't think there's going to be any decisions until we get much, much closer to the deadline with extending it, because it, I think, will be too early for anybody to come out now to say, "Let's go ahead and extend it." The governor, as he knows, is up for a recall in September. The deadline is really supposed to be October. I don't think we're going to see any decisions before that on the extension of time. I don't think we're going to see any decisions before that on the extension of time. With regards to the lawsuit, I don't know what the schedule is currently, and that could be definitely a factor for us to consider. Talking with our consultant just before this meeting, you know, we think that with our housing element, the staff member at HCD follows a checklist, you know, do you have this, do you have this, do you have this? And they follow that checklist and they provide those comments to us. So I don't, I don't think, from me personally, I just don't think it hurts us to go ahead and get this housing element up to HCD.
Do we know if there are any other cities that are as close to submission as we are?
I know a city of, was it one down San Diego? The one that, Coronado. Coronado went ahead and submitted their document to them. The county's behind us, Costa Mesa's behind us, Irvine, Dave, do you know Irvine? They're probably a month behind us also. Coronado did submit, they pivoted once they got the comments back from HCD and said, we're not going to comply. And they, they just, the council made a decision not to complete the RENA process, and so they're going to be out of compliance. What happens to Coronado, we don't know.
Wow.
So that, I do know that everybody's scrambling to get their housing element. San Clemente, I spoke to them, they're, they're probably a month behind us also.
One last question. I think it's hard for the community to reconcile that we've got forty percent affordable housing in our housing element, but we're looking at an inclusionary policy of fifteen percent. Can you help people to understand how we're going to get to forty percent if we're only requiring fifteen?
I think it's a very good question. We do know that HCD won't support any inclusionary above twenty percent, because it is going to be an impediment to development. And as we've talked about before, we're only planning for forty percent, and if, if a developer does not come up to forty percent, say they just provide twenty percent, we're going to have to tap into that buffer. And HCD says, you just need to have a plan, you're just providing that opportunity. Our inclusionary is the council's decision, whether it's five percent, whether it's fifteen, whether it's twenty percent. That difference in between is really going to be dependent on how much buffer units we have, and we feel, we feel better with our buffer units that we have on the screen right now, but we're feeling pretty good, so we have to make it up in the buffer units. It's going to be the same point, Councilmember Brenner, with the ADUs. If we don't achieve our target ADU projections of a thousand units, you know, we're going to have to go back out and rezone. And it's, and it's going to be, no matter how we plan this, it's a very tough, tough bar that we're going to have to hit here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions on this chart I had. On the pipeline projects of nineteen seventy-nine, I mean, I'm just looking at your numbers, one hundred and twenty, low, very low. So we're, those pipeline projects are not going to really get us to the affordable goals, right?
No.
So we're, this is something that we're, as we, it's obviously included in our plan to be, go to HCD. I mean, on the face of it, can we count that? I mean, the way you have subtracted that from the total obligation?
Well, the, the pipeline projects are exactly that, projects that have been entitled but not yet have been built, that have been, taken advantage of in terms of reported to HCD, and also as projects that are pending, and also the fifth cycle sites that just haven't redeveloped. These are existing properties in town that just haven't redeveloped. So, you know, we'll take advantage of each one of those, and if we do have an inclusionary ordinance that would apply to those projects, it wouldn't apply to all of them, but it would apply to many of them, then we would have some production along the way out of the existing latent development potential in the general plan.
So we could go back to them, those original, those projects and say, put more, include more affordable, lower?
We, we really couldn't go back on the projects that we've already entitled. Some of those have development agreements, and we wouldn't be changing those rules. We couldn't change those rules. But any future projects that come in that would be subject to this new ordinance, then we would apply it, of course, if, if there is that inclusionary fifteen percent or some replacement percentage. So we would have that opportunity.
All right, so let's talk about inclusionary for a moment. So we put a placeholder in there for fifteen, could go twenty, could go to ten. If we agree with fifteen as a placeholder, are you, is, is the city now going to implement that for all incoming projects this point forward?
Yes, we would. Projects that would be filed after the effective data that ordinance, definitely we would. And, you know, we would discuss how that, what, what different income categories, because in the policy right now, it just says fifteen percent. It doesn't say what income category, so it's fairly flexible. And that would be, that would also show the need to come in with a more robust ordinance to come in, and maybe, we might have different percentages for different income groups or different types of housing product type, you know, based on the community's needs at the time.
Well, just kind of piggybacking on Councilmember Brenner's comment about ADUs and different numbers for different groups, I mean, I just, parts of the city, rather, I wonder if we would consider, to be determined when we get into this deeply in the next thirty-six months, of how we might look at inclusionary, different percentages in different parts of the city? In some parts of the city, maybe twenty percent, other parts maybe ten, and other parts maybe fifteen.
I think those are all different options that are available for us to study, and hence why, you know, right now, we're just looking at a quick fifteen percent, get something on the books, and then follow it up, because, you know, you know, each different area of town is, is different qualities, and we may choose to have a different policy. So again, that would take additional study.
Okay, then just a kind of a process question. So we've received a few, maybe one or two, letters from potential developers who'd like to be included in the mix. Are we incorporating that, those requests? And then we've received letters from resident, residents in other parts of the city that don't want to be included. How are we dealing with these late entries?
Well, based on council's direction, back in June, we are, we have included those properties that have specifically requested to be in, and one example was Fritz Studa Company with the Little Plaza, so that is now in. We've had requests to be removed from there, and what we discovered inadvertently is we failed to take a few of them out, and so there's going to be, we're going to be pulling a few properties out. And so some of the numbers will change a little bit between now and the final document. You know, as Simone indicated, it is a draft, it is a work in progress, and so there, you should anticipate some, some minor changes like that going forward.
So are you saying that, for example, some of the residential groups, kind of in the airport area, they didn't want to be included? Are you taking them out?
Well, we, we will take those sites out of the opportunity list. It's, it's an interesting discussion, because some of those properties are currently designated mixed use and would otherwise be allowed a housing opportunity. Question is whether they're going to be on the housing opportunity list. They don't need to be, but we'd have to evaluate later through the rezone strategies how we're going to handle whether they're going to continue to be in the mixed-use zone. Different questions, subtly, but we will be taking council's direction and removing those properties who don't want to be included on the list for the draft going to HCD.
So when do we take that action? Is that coming back to us?
So Councilmember Dixon, so if the property owner sends us a letter to say, remove us, we will go ahead and do that, and we're currently doing that. We've done it already in the draft before you. We'll do it start tomorrow again, so we'll, it's, we're continuing to scrub the information that's in the housing element.
Because I'm, just from an awareness standpoint in the community, I mean, I applaud those residential areas that, community groups that are tracking. I just wonder if, if everybody is aware that they have that option.
But we're, we're not removing properties because somebody's saying, remove that property. If only a property owner wants to be removed.
Okay.
We're only doing it from a property owner basis.
Okay, okay, that's a good distinction.
Yes.
Okay, what about a property owner who, like Uptown Newport, are we adding them in?
Sure. Shopoff did send us a letter yesterday. We are evaluating it. We will include them if we can. It's, it's an issue also of timing. If they want to be included, are they going to build out those units during this next eight years?
Okay, that's, so you have to look into it?
Right.
Okay. And when we talk about, back to the schedule with HCD, and they certainly can respond in whatever way, we can't speculate, but on a scale of one to ten, have we really, if you read our document, which I know you have, and I have, and we all probably have reviewed it, I mean, it's quite an extensive discourse on how we plan for housing in the city of Newport Beach in accordance with the state requirements. I mean, it's not just RENA, it's just a whole basket full of requirements that the state has mandated on cities and as part of their housing element and the general plan process. So there's extensive work here. We're complying with RENA. I mean, that was our mandate. Where would we be vulnerable?
I think it's really going to be, do we have those policies to support the forty percent affordable housing? Do we have enough policies? Do we have enough statements of facts, as they say? Do we have enough policies to support those ADU units? Do we, is there plenty that we've put in here? Do we have a robust program that we think we can support the thousand units? That's what they're going to be looking at. Do we have everything that can support our housing element, or we're short on that? And if we're short, let HCD tell us, and let our consultant draft some additional policies that are going to be able to support these projections that we've made.
Well, it certainly is, was an illuminating experience to read that document over the weekend, just to see the massive amount of mandates that come from Sacramento on local governments of how we allow for housing, and then, as we know, land use and everything else. But I guess this is a long way of saying, I really commend you and our consultants and our community and then our task force and residents to, the time that it's taken to put this together, and it's, I guess it's, it's the way of our life today, and I know OCOG, being a member of OCOG, I'm very familiar with the litigation that's been proposed. That, incidentally, if it's successful, it's going to have just a modest effect in terms of change, the change in methodology, but nonetheless, it's more of the principle of challenging that. I just encourage everybody to be familiar with the housing element, it's the final draft, because it is mind-boggling what the state of California mandates on local government today, and it's even gotten more extensive. So thank you for all of your good work for the last year and a half in doing this. It's, it's amazing, on top of everything else you're doing. I'm really grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, so two questions. The first one is dealing with City of Coronado. So they, they submitted already and got comments back from HCD that fast?
And if you don't mind, Councilmember, I'll have our consultant who's been working on it, Mr. Barquist? David Barquist from Kimley Horn, who's, who's worked on that.
Yes, the answer to the question is, is Coronado's in the Sandag region, so their timeline is different. It's April fifteenth, I believe, was their deadline, so a hundred and twenty days beyond that. They did go into the hundred and twenty day period. They had a sixty-day review period, that's how long it took HCD to review it. They got comments back. Subsequent to that, the city council had directed staff and the consultants to, the original RENA allocation was nine hundred and twelve units, and they decided to utilize two hundred as their local assumption of what that is. So essentially, they're not complying with their RENA statutory obligation.
Okay, so Coronado then is in Sandag. Sandag has already gone through the entire process, and so let's try to compare, let's compare apples to apples, and so when we're talking about the SCAG region, who are you aware of, at least, let's just even start in Orange County, who are you aware of that has submitted the, their, you know, their draft element so far?
Yeah, I'm just going to start throwing these out of the air, just the ones that I know, Marietta, Fontana, Island Empire, Rialto is just about to do that. Here in Orange County, Newport is kind of leading the way. I believe there's, Irvine has a draft out that's going through the process. A few jurisdictions, and City of Orange is prepared in the next month. County of Orange, probably in the next two to three months, will have a draft. And then there's another, a few of those in the Island Empire that are on that same track.
Okay. I think the direction from up here is, so far, has been to try not to be the first one out of the blocks. I'm going to maintain that position, so we'll, we'll talk about that when we get done with public comment, then.
Do we have any other comments from the dice? All right, open it up for public comment. Please come forward.
I have a slide. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Nancy Scarborough. I'm representing good neighbor Newport, and most of you know my involvement in the housing issues. I'm going to go just about a minute over, if that's okay with you, Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you. One aspect that has been largely ignored in this process is the density bonuses and the incentives for developers who want to take advantage of the legislated entitlements for building affordability housing. I have asked whether or not the tables in the draft element included density bonuses allowed by state law on several occasions, and I was told that they did not. So I decided to figure it out for myself and see what would happen if one applied different inclusionary rates to the numbers that we've been talking about for the last several months. Density bonuses, for those who haven't gone through a lot of reading on the side, midnight reading, they are incentives that the states required by law to entice developers to build more affordable housing. They are based on a developer providing a certain percentage of affordable units in each project, and there's a matrix embedded in the state law that states exactly what the percentage of additional market rate units a developer is entitled to build if they provide the prescribed number of affordable units. This chart is based on the table B one, and it's in the proposed revisions that have been provided tonight, today. It's calculated, I've, I've extended it out to calculate five percent, fifteen percent, and twenty percent, so that you can see what those density bonuses have, what happens. The columns under the blue header are from the B one numbers. The orange column down the middle shows the worst-case scenario if all projects in the city were built at the lowest proportion of affordable units needed for a developer to qualify for a density bonus. This is likely what would happen without a, an inclusionary policy. By including five percent affordable and ninety-five percent market units, a developer is granted a twenty percent density bonus. That means a developer can build an additional twenty percent of the total number of units for the project. The additional units can be above market rate, they are not required to be affordable. You can see the number at the bottom of the orange section, that number in red is thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four units. That's a big number. The light blue column shows what would happen at fifteen percent and to eighty-five percent ratio. That gives, gives us twenty-four thousand, five hundred and three, which is better, but still a lot. The green column shows twenty percent to eighty percent ratio, so that number drops to seventeen thousand, four forty-one. It's still a daunting number of residential units. Obviously, we do not have enough land in Newport Beach to build forty thousand apartments in the next eight years, even if we started converting office buildings and hotels to high-density, mixed-income apartments. The point is, if we don't get in front of this with an interim, immediate inclusionary policy, we could have a rush on the bank and find ourselves overwhelmed with a lot of high-density, nominally, minimally affordable, five percent apartments, with a lot of luxury apartments, which would make up the other ninety-five percent. By the way, the table B one that the staff has included is based on the forty percent affordability ratio, which we've been told is very difficult to achieve. If that is what we are representing to the public, shouldn't our inclusionary policy be aligned at forty percent inclusionary rate so that we can meet the housing numbers that are reflected in the table B one? Staff and consultants have explained this as the reason for the buffer. This is difficult for residents to understand, and I think we should provide the public with a better understanding of how this will work. My three concluding remarks are that, number one, I think we should fully understand what is allowed by state law, by right, regarding density bonuses, how that law works, and the other incentives allowed for the projects at various levels of affordability. Two, we need to come up with an interim, intermediate, or immediate interim inclusionary policy. We don't have a year, we don't even have six months to get this place, this policy in place. Third, we need to fully understand the ramifications of both the inclusionary policy and density bonuses on projects that will surely start to be proposed. We're seeing it already, we've got letters from people that want to be included, and we need to design our policies that will be included in the draft housing element before we stamp the envelope and mail it to HCD. Please consider this as you are directing staff tonight or in the future. This is our collective legacy. Residents may not know this is coming, but they will certainly notice when these projects start to be entitled and be built. Thank you for your consideration and for indulging me for a little extra time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. Deborah Allen, President of the Harperview House Community Association. I think boiled down to my concerns, I have not had a chance to read the whole, the whole changes to
whole changes to the document. Thank you to staff for doing a red-line version. That was very helpful. But I have studied some of it over the weekend. The bottom line is, I really think we do need to take as much time as we possibly can for the, a number of unanswered questions. And certainly, there's no reason why Newport Beach should be first. I'll, I'll give you the perspective from my neighborhood. Of course, the issue to us is, is the long-established site plane ordinance. And just with regard to the site plane ordinance, a couple of things point out. First of all, I agree with the previous speaker that we need the inclusionary zoning policy in place, adopted before the upzoning of the, the projects. In other words, Newport Center is basically going to be zoning overlay, upzoning to 50 dwelling units an acre. That's, you know, Uptown Newport. We all know what that looks like. We, we need that policy in place before we, before we do that because I agree that the moment that that upzoning is adopted, the, the building permits and the request for building permits are going to come in fast and furious. There are several sites under the site plane ordinance in Newport Center. There's about 17 of them. Of those 17, six or seven, possibly eight, landowners have already sent written requests into the city saying that they're interested in this housing opportunity. So, it's not something that's going to happen later. It's something that they're already interested in now. And if we're going to have anything like that kind of additional development, we need to make sure that we're trying to, to, to meet our affordable housing goals in, in some manner. The next question is, we've been kind of kicking the can down the road about when we're going to deal with the site plane ordinance and having it considered as part of the housing element because right now, as the element's written, it disappears. You're talking about, the site plane limits the heights of those 17 sites to about 32 feet, and 50 dwelling units an acre is about four or five stories tall. So, it, it goes away. And we've been told that the way we're going to deal with that is something called the objective design standards, which is the second phase of this planning process. It's going to happen after the housing element is adopted. But what troubles me is in the document right now, as it stands, the housing element that we're going to submit to the state, it says that objective design standards cannot impede the affordable goal. Well, I can't understand how you're going to have an objective design standard that says, what, a couple of sentences? That says, it's currently 32 feet in height. We're allowing you five stories tall, but no, you can't do that because of the site plane ordinance, you're back to 32 feet. I, I can't understand how we're going to justify that as not affecting the affordable goal. So, anyway, the bottom line is, I think a number of these things need much more study, and I think Newport should let other cities go first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Avery and members of the city council. My name is Debbie Stevens, also a member of the Housing Element Update Committee. So, I know a lot of the work, how much work went into this. So, I do want to say thank you to, to staff and to our consultant. I think we've got really educated people working on this and have given us really good advice. But it's a tough ask. But the ask is for 4,845 units. And the numbers that we're getting, you know, depending on how we look at this, are, are double that at least. So, I, I would like to see this be more focused on the numbers that we have to do instead of, you know, all of this other stuff because it's just, it's just very difficult to see those numbers. So, kind of similar to what the previous speakers also said, is that I think some of these policies need to be in there because if you just zone, or that's not the correct word, but designate the, these parcels to be 50 units an acre, I, I don't see, there's no cap on that. So, it could be any kind of numbers up to, up to that. So, I think we need to look at this in terms of something less than the 100% buffer that we have at the moment. I too agree that the site plane ordinance needs to be looked at now and not later. I don't, I don't know that a little, you know, and I think something will happen to it if we don't deal with it now. So, anyway, but I do like a lot of the changes that have been made, the ADUs, bringing those back up. I think that's a great idea. So, I do like the changes that we've gotten to so far. I'd just like to see that buffer number really looked at in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Avery, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I apologize, this won't be very organized, but I'm trying to do my best I can for my scribbled notes. I, I agree with the other speakers and some of the council members that I think this draft is not at all ready for submittal at this point. I would point out that the electronic version that the public has to look at is not easy to navigate. It has no table of contents. It has no bookmarks. It has hundreds of pages to look through. I'm guessing you might have a printed copy to have reviewed over the weekend. I don't know if you did or not. The public has a single copy of it to look at in the city hall in the planning department. I would suggest if you actually want the public to look at this and intelligently review it, you might consider placing printed copies of it in the city libraries as you do when we have an environmental impact report. This seems at least as important as that. We heard in the presentation that you had sent a letter to HCD or the staff had, something to do with Banning Ranch. I had no idea what that was. I looked on the city website and knowing something about the website, found that there had been a letter sent yesterday, apparently, five pages long. I didn't know what it said. I did spend an hour before this study session in the city hall looking at the printed copy. I looked at our plan for Banning Ranch. I was startled to find it showed housing peppered all over the ranch, but at most it showed 29 units in a particular parcel. And the numbers looked to me like if I added them up, it might add up to a couple of hundred. And yet, at the bottom of that, it says that they add up to 1,475. I think HCD would be as puzzled as I am. It seems otherwise elsewhere replete with contradictions. I looked at the policy section. I was gratified to see that we have a Policy 5D committing ourselves to protecting mobile homes, mobile home parks. Yet, we also have a Policy 4F that encourages the development of opportunity sites. And all the mobile homes sites that we have in our city are designated as opportunity sites to be demolished and turned into high-density housing. I don't know how those can be consistent. And then we heard in the presentation that, that the new draft includes the policy to establish mixed-use resort opportunities. I'm wondering if it's really in there? The policy has already been established, and it was apparently approved by the Planning Commission last week. But in itself, it was in there, seems contradictory. The Planning Commission approved the director's determination, for instance, that Renaissance Hotel in the airport area is suitable for 141 dwelling units. Yet, our map of opportunity sites shows it's not an opportunity site at all. Sorry, I said it to the best I can. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Avery and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner. And I agree with a lot of what I've heard from the, from the audience tonight, today. But I just also want to have some other comments too. And listening to Debbie Stevens, we only have to do 4,800 and some, and here we have all these others. I want us to focus on as much affordable as we possibly can and start to, try to stay within that number as close as we can, as we can. Sorry, my voice is going. And that's why I'm going to ask you to think again about the number of ADUs. I actually think that we could put in 1,500 and succeed in getting that. Our community is used to ADUs. I mean, this is something we all grew up with, where you have a lot of secondary residences everywhere and they're in small areas, as you know, Babo Island and Old Corona Mar. I live in an area where there's plenty of room to build a lot of ADUs. And I think we could push that and ask for 1,500. It seems to me we should not overlook that opportunity because that would certainly help get us closer to the number we want to keep down. And the other thing I, I agree with is, Councilman O'Neil said it publicly, and I agree that the, put this in as late as you possibly can. So many things are changing. Everything you read about people moving out of the state, I don't know if I believe that, but that's what I read everywhere. And we certainly have a problem with the water. And I think that has come up so strongly recently that we, we can't just ignore the fact that we have some services that will have to go with all these units. So, as low as we can make this, I think is the most important thing we can do. Delay it, add more affordable units through ADUs, and, and try to get the ideas of what we have to, what are we going to do about the water with all these new residents? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. I hope the information Nancy Scarborough shares is shocking enough to give you the courage to implement the suggestions we are making today. In reading the minutes of the last meeting, I'm inclined to say the same things. Increase the ADU count to 1,500, add inclusionary zoning at 20%, and delay the submittal of the draft to the fourth quarter. The higher ADU expectation provides the easiest way to meet the very low and low without building the market rate apartments to support them. Write the policies and submit and see what happens. On June 22nd, you saw slides that showed some SoCal cities with between 10 and 15% inclusionary. Pasadena has 20%. And Santa Monica currently has 30%. La Habra keeps being brought up. They just adopted a 15%. And in the April issue of the BIA Orange County Magazine, there is an editorial crowing about how the BIA scored a win for the members by keeping the inclusionary so low and quote, thankfully, the council added a much lower 650 per square foot in Lufi, end quote. Newport will not be out of place at a 20% inclusionary to start. If it proves unworkable, we can always lower it later. It will be difficult to, impossible to raise. We will not get the projects we want without requiring it. Developers will build the minimum they are required to. Our average to date, according to the staff report, has been around 7%. Lastly, what is the rush to turn in the draft? You've heard tonight the staff say, it's more work for us and we'll be pushed. But like everyone else has said and will continue to say, and even Councilmember O'Neil is considering, there's no benefit that we can see that justifies turning it in earlier rather than later. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Avery and members of the city council. My name is Susan DeSantis. I am a member of the Housing Element Update Committee and also a 35-year resident of Newport Beach. I do want to commend the city council as well as the staff and the consultants on the excellent work that has been done. I do believe that there has been a significant effort to communicate with the community and to take the input of the community on the various issues under consideration here, and that it is reflected to a large extent in the latest draft. I believe that the policies and strategies that are in the latest draft will go a significant way to addressing the concerns of HCD. I have been a, a member and participant in the Good Neighbors Group and do subscribe to all of the comments that were made by Nancy Scarborough as well, as well as many of the other speakers here today. I think that there can be a delay in submitting, that we don't need to be the first ones in the door. I do believe that we could increase the number of ADUs to 1,500 and that there is a good chance that it would be approved. I also believe that the inclusionary policy is appropriate, that it be basically at a 20% or higher level and on an interim basis until the council completes a more thorough study and evaluation of the various other factors that would have to go and be complementary with that policy. So, with that, I, I don't want to reiterate what has already been said, but I do think that we would all agree that there are very real housing needs that members of our community have, including seniors on fixed incomes as well as young families. And that we need, as a community and as a, as a county and a state, to put a concerted effort on the part of the public and the private sector to address those issues. And that greater investment is needed from all levels of government and the private sector, as we can see coming in from various foundations where resources are being contributed for affordable housing. So, there are many things that we can all agree on. And I would like to see us succeed and think that the draft that you have in front of you is, it's almost there. There just are some tweaks that need to be made before it can be submitted. Thank you for your attention. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and honorable counsel. First of all, it is so great to see everybody in person. So, that's nice. I'm Steve Ray. For 13 years ago, I founded the Banning Ranch Conservancy to save Banning Ranch. And until very recently, I served as the executive director for the Conservancy all these years. Our effort was to preserve Banning Ranch, to stop the development and to acquire it eventually and turn it into park and coastal nature preserve. One thing that many studies have shown is that parks and open space are as important to and actually healthier and more vital to the, to the life of a community than additional housing is. So, we have been trying to save Banning Ranch for all these years. And not to get into history too much, but lest we forget it or ignore it, the Coastal Commission, when it denied the project of 895 homes and 1,475 is being proposed now, but they denied 895 homes on the basis that it was, almost the entire property constitutes escha. It's wetlands, it's fernal pools, it's habitat for endangered and threatened species. Some of the plant habitats are required to be preserved just by themselves because they're rare and special plants. The Supreme Court, in their decision, supporting our position, ruled that the escha would have to be taken into consideration before any development could occur on Banning Ranch. And since almost the entire site is escha, that kind of precludes development. So, I'm here to urge you to remove Banning Ranch from your, your planning purposes. And I, I know you kind of looked around and, and saw that big chunk of 400 acres sitting there and said, well, let's try that. It's, it's just not going to work. Now, we've moved on. You know, we are now in the process of acquiring, as you have probably heard, Banning Ranch. It's, the contract was signed over a year ago. The purchase price is $97 million. We have a majority of the money already in place. We have identified most of the rest of the money for the acquisition. We are planning to close within the coming 10 to 12 months on the property. One provision of that agreement is that it will be permanently deed restricted as open space for park and coastal nature preserve purposes. So, it'll basically be precluded from participating in your plan for housing development. And as Jim Mosher pointed out, all 19 parcels of that are shown to be housing and building in wetlands, building in the flood control zone, building in the midst of oil wells is just not going to be realistic also. Mr. Mayor, I read your letter to the state, and I, I certainly understand the contradictions, as you pointed out, the words you used, between the state wanting housing and the state wanting open space. And it is possible to have both. In the numbers, and if I could get just a few extra seconds here to conclude, because I have an offer to make too. here to conclude, because I have an offer to make, too. In the numbers, your staff identifies that of the five remaining areas, that it's feasible to put in 21,120 residential units in those five areas. That would more than cover the 1,475 deficit that would be created by removing Banning Ranch, to identify those numbers in other areas. I agree that this contradiction does present problems for the city, and we want to help you try to resolve that. You mentioned that, you know, maybe it's possible to reduce the RINA numbers, maybe there are other ways to find, to resolve this problem. We would be most willing to sit with your staff, with your committee, with the council, to try to resolve these dilemmas, and see if we can help find a way and help persuade some of the state agencies where we have good relationships, that there is an opportunity to, for Newport Beach, to shine as a city with new housing, but also to shine as the owner, and, well, not necessarily the owner, but as the recipient of this great park that will be the future of Banning Ranch. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sandra Ayers, and I want to thank the City Council and the Housing Element Committee, who have all they've done. And I want to emphasize that I see that good leadership and the group decisions usually come with good leadership, and group decisions are the best results from the input of the citizens who are so willing to offer their talents and their experience to make this all a better, enhanced experience. So good for you, good for the staff for being good listeners to these people. I wanted to come down, and there were two certain points that I thought I could just give my support to, which was the ADU units, bringing them up to 1,500. I think that being worried to submit that shouldn't be the case, because I think that's a preferable living condition. I think a lot of people would prefer that type of experience as opposed to apartment buildings. So if we can put that into the argument, that this is something that's a real, kind of a normal thing, that, you know, you're not packing people into some kind of affordable living condition, that it actually could be a good argument. And then the second was to encourage the policy for the senior housing units. I think that's something that we can really say is a benefit to our town, and that people in our town are so welcoming to that type of living condition. We already have some here in the area, and to me, having a nice mix of age groups within the city is just only an addition. So I would encourage that, those two special policies. Lastly, I would just also throw my comment in with the final draft, to make sure that we're asking all neighborhoods to carry the brunt of these impacts, and not just a few, to carry the safety and traffic impacts that are going to happen. Over time, that's only going to split our city and not keep the villages, you know, different but cohesive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Council. My name is Dave Tanner. I've got four points I'd like to share with you today. The staff report on Table B1 that you have indicates the RINA requirement of 4,845 units will result in a total potential development capacity, as in the table, of 9,119 units. To reach the 9,119 units, staff is assuming, and I'm putting this in basic English, that the project is going to, that projects will average 48.5% affordability. The city's historic average is closer to 5% to 10%. 5% to 10% affordability yields a total potential development capacity of 20,000 to 30,000 units. This has been told to you before by Ms. Scarborough and others, I think I've even said it. For current example of projects, the 2510 West Coast Highway Project, proposed project, that's 8% affordable. So I have a recommendation for you, and that is that the city tell HCD in its draft submittal, and I wouldn't call it a final draft, I would just say a draft, because I think it'll go back and forth, that the city wants to meet its affordable housing requirement by 100% affordable housing projects. 100%, not 48%, 100%. This means all affordable housing projects will be totally dependent on subsidies, probably state and federal subsidies. They're requiring it, let them pay for it. This will yield a total unit count of 4,845 units, the fewest additional housing units possible, the lowest environmental impact to our city, to our residents. HCD will likely disagree. Of course, they're going to say no. The city can make the argument, this is the only feasible solution, given the city's historic trends, high land values, existing build-out condition, and the significant adverse environmental effects anticipated from build-out of higher unit counts. We don't know those impacts yet. Start high with the state and deal down. Go in the middle of the pack. Second point I'd like to make is if the city supports litigation opposing RINA, the language in the draft housing element should support the issues raised in the litigation. Third point is the housing element, circulation element, and other elements, other element updates required to maintain internal consistency with the general plan form the project description for the environmental impact report and the analysis with which it will undertake. There are two updates that need to occur in the housing element, Community Profile section, this hasn't been touched in the current draft, prior to completion of the draft DIR. These two are to insert the new census data. The current draft before you relies on the 2010 census. The 2020 census is out now, and it shows the US grew by 7.4%. That's the legal population grew by 7.4%. Just a couple more points. The updated population growth forecasts that are in this Community Profile section rely on SCAG's 2016 to 2045 projection, population projection or forecast. The forecast is prior to the 2020 census and does not include the 1.3 million unit requirement for SCAG. For example, SCAG's 2016 to 45 forecast for Newport Beach population is to increase by 7,100 units by 2045. That's Table 2-1. Yet staff's projecting a total population development capacity, that's your Table B1, of 9,119 units or roughly 20,000 residents by 2029. So we're way off in this, and that needs to be completed. Lastly, I'll be very quick. The staff has asked its residents to comment on the proposed new housing and circulation element policies. These requests are premature. On their face, the new policies sound fair and reasonable. However, without knowing if significant adverse effects will result from their implementation, a meaningful comment cannot be provided. A good example is the federal policy of open borders sounded reasonable to many. However, the adverse effects of the open borders policy have proven to be numerous and significant. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Good afternoon, Counsel. My name is John Tefoya. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters Union. I'm a resident of Orange County. I live, work, and recreate in the vicinity. I've got four points I'd like to make, bring to your attention. One is that the city should review SCAG's six-cycle regional housing needs assessment allocation for the city, and enact policies and strategies to ensure adequate housing units for city residents of all income categories. The city should require new development projects to include additional community benefits, such as requiring local hire and use of skilled and trained workforce to build projects, giving a lot of us locals an opportunity to work close to home instead of having to drive two hours one way, and when, and be able to attend our kids' Little League and our daughter's softball games, instead of being stuck in traffic. Three, the city should also require that projects to be built by two standards exceeding the current 2019 California Green Building Codes to mitigate environmental impact and to advocate, advance progress towards the State of California's environmental goals. And last, the city's draft housing element does not comply with the state planning and zoning law, among other things, failing to report or implementations of the programs adopted during the last cycle, and failing to analyze existing constraints on housing development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? All right, seeing none, bring it back up to the council. Ms. Dixon?
I think we need more discussion about the delay. I'll defer that discussion to Mr. O'Neil, but if he wants to make a motion to a delay, I'll say no, I'll support it. I do want to explore if we're going to delay, if that vote happens. I would like to include in that time to look at the 1,500 ADUs. And I know it requires a lot of rejiggering on all the allocations, but I would, I would support that. And hearing the comments from Ms. Scarborough, Mr. Klob, I would like to consider the benefits of a 20% inclusionary. So that's where I am right now, delay. I'll let Mr. O'Neil speak to that, and let's go up to 1,500 ADUs. If HCD rejects it, so be it, but at least we put it out there, because I think it's really doable in our community. And the 20%, just based on Ms. Scarborough's numbers, that was impressive to me. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have a natural reason to slow it down just a bit to see what we're, what's happening with the uptown Newport submission. It'd be nice to get that sorted out. But just my comments are generally to those in the audience, those watching at home. Although a landlord might submit requests to have something potentially entitled in the future, our hope is that they don't actually do it. And it's a reminder that we have to plan for the worst-case scenario to our, to our standard of living and congestion because of consequences from Sacramento, not local. And, you know, I don't know if they're going to do it at Coronado. I made a joke, maybe we're going to throw it in the sea for not complying. You know, we'll, we'll fight for Newport. We're a well-walled city, walled city. We won't, we won't fall into the ocean, but it's bordering ridiculous, and the hoops we have to go through, things we have to do to try to appease a faceless bureaucrat in Sacramento. It's really disheartening. It's not that I don't miss meetings where I got yelled at for people who are saying, "Don't build something," but it just doesn't seem right how this process is being pushed forward. And just, again, just wanted to reiterate that if a landlord says, "Hey, I'd like to be put in this list, I might consider doing something down the road," it doesn't mean that they're going to. And in a way, they're actually doing us a favor if they submit and perhaps don't do it, because now we have something to show the state that we have planned building. Thanks.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, maybe a few points. The first one, I went on the HCD website to find out if they had a list of the draft elements that had been submitted, and it turns out they do. So I just want to point out real quickly, Brea has submitted, Dana Point has submitted, La Palma, Laguna Beach, looks like Laguna Beach submitted, and already got their comments back saying that they're in compliance on it. Laguna Woods, San Clemente, Tustin, and Villa Park. So we wouldn't be the first, but we'd still be right at the tail end of the first quarter-ish, C258. So we'd be in the, right at the beginning of the second quartile of cities in Orange County, or somewhere in that range. I'm not suggesting we submit right now, but I don't know. I'm thinking if, even if we're about 30 days out from submitting, that's probably, that's probably about right to put us in the middle of the pack. Probably a few points worth mentioning. These are great points on why the housing policy and, a lot of our public comments are great about why the Californian's housing policy is bad. We're seeing worse bills coming out and being voted on very shortly. And so I hope that everyone here is not just talking to their council members, and they're also talking to their Assembly Member, Cotty Petrie-Norris, and their State Senator, Dave Min, about voting on those bills and also trying to get us some relief. Mr. Ray's point, it is just an absurd position to put cities in to demand housing of us. Know that we have, in past general plans, not just allocated housing in Banning Ranch area, but approved housing in the Banning Ranch area. Tell us that we have to submit 4,800 units in our city, and then remove by grant funding by a different state agency 1,400 planned units. It just, it's left hand not knowing what the right hand's doing, but the right hand's holding a hammer and telling us, "We're going to hit you," while the left hand is taking away our ability to comply. And so that is, I appreciate the mayor sending a letter to HCD asking for relief on that, because it's just, it's just absurd. And this is, this is the kind of thing that the cities are being put into. We're just an example of it. So to Mr. Ray's point, yes, Mr. Ray, we would love to get support. It appears, based on all of the glowing PR that has been received lately, that you have quite a bit of support in Sacramento. And so to the extent that you can use all of that support to help us get a reduction in our housing units on the RINA level, we would welcome that with open arms. It's not that everybody up here wants to see building. I think that there's an understanding that an open space is a beautiful thing in our city. We have a substantial, we have substantially more open space in our city than I think people realize. I mean, we're always getting, we're always in, you know, magazines and whatnot, and there's, they show, you know, getting a Balboa bar, but they also show hiking and give people examples of what to do all over our city. So open space is a fantastic thing, and if we don't have to put housing in it, great. But we have one agency telling us, "Build, build, build," and we have other agencies saying, "Thou shall not." And this is the problem that we've been trying to go through. So my point being that, for the last 18 months, we've been trying to kind of pound our head against a wall on this and just try to squeeze in housing where, yes, the environmental concerns are massive, the water concerns, the public safety concerns of where do we put another, do we need to put another fire station, substation, do we need to put, where is the additional, where is the additional water going to come from? These are all great questions, but the State of California so far has answered them by saying, "We don't care, build the housing." And that's the problem with being at the, being at the city level and being told constantly by the State of California to do certain things that we would not enact if we had the choice. Clearly, we wouldn't do any of this. And the last point I'll just make real quickly, having the inclusionary zoning ordinance, not having the inclusionary zoning ordinance, I mean, it doesn't get us to 40% one way or the other, and we're not going to see massive applications coming in, because the land use element's not being updated until '24 at the earliest. So to the extent that happens, green light, forces of vote of the people, it's the exact same thing that's going on in Encinitas right now. We're going to have to go through the land use element. We can't approve the land use element changes up here and have it immediately go into effect. It's going to have to go through a green light vote, which will be interesting. But, you know, we'll, we'll have a pretty good roadmap, because other cities will be doing the same thing. So I guess my thought process is, you know, I think if we do a lot of the things that have been suggested so far, you know, at this point, 18 months later, it's going to set us up for the ability to not have a compliant housing element, just because we'll run up against the time. Clearly, we will not get, I think that there's no one, at least at the consultant level, that has looked at our numbers and said, "You have any shot at 1,000 units, let alone 1,500 on the ADU?" So I think 1,000 is a pretty big stretch, considering that, I think, Simone, we've got, what, 20 traditional units so far submitted, and 30 at the Coronados on ADUs? And that's just by converting storage lockers or something along those lines at Coronado. Am I right on that?
That's correct. Coronado has converted their extra storage space to ADUs, probably just more studio apartments. But in your traditional single-family or duplex, you know, we are, we've seen about 20 so far this year. So it's not, it's not overwhelming.
So even, I mean, even if we doubled that, we're at 40. Over a 10-year, eight-year period, that's 320, and we're, we're telling HCD, "Well, don't worry, we'll get to 1,000."
Correct.
I'm just saying, look, we understand. We don't like this. No one up here likes this. And that's saying it mildly, but at some point, we need to get to a point where we're not studying and we're submitting, and at least on the draft side, putting it in. I think we're at that point where we should probably be putting this in, in about 30 days, you know, holding our nose the whole time.
Thank you. Do we have any other counsel comment?
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'm gonna follow up on a decent amount of what Will said, but there's a couple of things that struck me, and the ADUs are number one because, you know, I've heard Joy talk about she has an ADU that can't be licensed, so how does she get through that? Which brings me to the point of, if we're building new ADUs, those come with a very real cost associated with building. If we're charging low income for those ADUs, what's that return on investment that we're looking like? So if we're spending $250,000 on building an ADU in our backyard, we're charging that 1,500 to 2,000, and we're looking at a return on investment of somewhere between 11 and 14 years, which doesn't seem like that's a real big push for a lot of people in the city. It seems like we're really hoping on something. And, you know, I think the one thing that's been interesting about this conversation and this topic is that nobody here likes it. None of us are fighting to build. We're all fighting not to build, just in different ways, which I think is great. It brought literally every head of the community together to kind of come up with an idea of how do we do this in the least intrusive way to our community, which is wonderful. Newport doesn't want to build. We don't wanna make giant skyscrapers and giant metros. We're trying to preserve our villages, and we're trying to figure out a great way. And then we start talking about things like an inclusionary ordinance, which really frightened me because it stops small, great development, because it stops the people that could do something and it brings in larger developers, larger developers that know how to work the bureaucracy more. And that makes me nervous. I like that we've always been kind of a small-town community. I like that even when we have big developers, they're small-town big developers. There are small-town big developers. And I get nervous when we start going down this road with inclusionary policies where we're demanding from the dais how to build. Newport demands what we build because of the cost of our land. That's why we've built what we've built. It hasn't because we've had a mandate on high. It's not because we forced it. And right now, we're responding to the state. When I look through the timeline, I think we've done a great job. We have a 60-day review process. If I do the math real quick, which we always like to do, it puts us right there, right there at the threshold for that 60, 60-day review. And as Will just brought up, we're not alone here, you know? There's other cities going in. Sometimes it's better to be in the fray than on the second front. It's okay to be in the back of the first front. There's, there's a decent amount of fodder in front of us right now. I think our staff's worked tirelessly on this. I understand that we're not going to find a common solution across the board. That's okay. I understand we all want more or less. We all have a different idea of percentages and what we're gonna get out of this. The end of the day is that this is a great debate, and I believe it was Jim that quoted Keith Curry that says, "The product of government is process." Right now, we're here for process. There's not an ounce of product being developed up here. There's nothing being built. We have no houses. We have no new dwelling units. What's happening right now is that we're talking about it, and we're debating it tirelessly to not even know what HCD is about to say. We'd like to know, and I think that our submission early doesn't hamstring us at all. It gives us information so that we can continue our debate and continue our negotiation. So I'm never for an inclusionary policy. I'm for the city's staff's recommendation of moving this forward and submitting it. I think we've put our best foot forward. I understand that we all want more in, but I wanna hear what HCD has to say so that we can prepare our fight earlier rather than later. It's better for us to have more time so that we can put every ounce of information and get more public opinion back because we'd like to hear what you guys have to say after we hear what they say. And I think that's one of the more important things. So my recommendation is, of course, to move forward with submitting this and to remove any element of the inclusionary policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
I'd like to just give you a list of the things that I would like to see included. And you know what? If, if things were as they were before, I would not be in favor of an inclusionary policy either. But there's no way to get to our affordable housing numbers unless we have an inclusionary policy. I mean, it's not even, we're not even looking at an inclusionary policy as large as the projection that we're using in our, our housing elements. So I don't know how to get there without an inclusionary policy. It's, it's sort of critical, not that we like it. I also agree about delaying submittal, at least until we get some of these things cleared up. I'd like to see us look at overlay zones for ADUs. I thought Jim's idea about copies to all the libraries was a really good one. And I'd like to take up Steve on his offer, and Steve Ray on his offer, and work with him to see how they can support us in modifying our numbers. I'd also like us to do a study session on what 100% affordable projects look like and perhaps design standards because some of the ones that I've seen, you would not be able to differentiate between those and something that was just built in Newport because it was attractive. So I think we need to, to dispel the rumor that affordable housing projects are all ghastly and institutionalized because what I've seen, they're not. I'd also like to push the objection to this process from the state because their, their process was implemented before the pandemic and before the advent of so many people working from home. And I think we really need to emphasize that when we're talking to the state. So those are just my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, could we put up the slide, the last slide, what you're, what you're looking for from us so we can kind of work this through? Here's my suggestion so we can at least kind of move this forward. And I'm willing to kind of take some of the slings and arrows from folks in the audience because that's what I've been doing for the last 18 months anyway. So I'll try to see if I can figure out how to wrangle support for, for where to go. I think we oughta wait 30 days, submit. That'll put us two council meetings ahead so that if there's something that comes up between now and the second, the, the meeting, oh, wait a second, I'm sorry. August is a late meeting.
Wait a second.
You know what? If we needed to call a special meeting, our city, our, our mayor can call it. If something comes up in the next 30 days that would justify us taking a look at that, then we should. I do wonder, though, if we, you know, if receiving this Uptown Newport item, do we, do we need, if you're gonna incorporate that in, you know, does that, does that, would it change much other than the number, you know, specific to that property?
We are not sure yet because we know there's some properties that need to come out also. So we don't know if it'll wash out.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I had a follow-up question on that, but go ahead.
So, so if, if the Uptown Newport needs additional units, we need to balance that with some of those other properties that need to come out. And we can actually change some of the variables, not the percentages or the density, but some of that redevelopment percentage, where we probably can land back to where we started.
Land back where we started.
Back to our concurrent rezone strategy, which is on the screen and about right here.
Yeah. Well, isn't the, isn't part of the issue also, though, as we're kind of talking this through, isn't, we don't have, we're, we're never gonna submit a list of sites that will actually comply with 4,800 units, you know, plus the, the buffer? I mean, that's, that's kind of the point of when we sent out all of the, the APNs, that we don't, we'll never have enough APNs to cover this. So it's, at this point, we're sort of, we're designating into areas of the city. So even if we added or subtracted, it's still in, in an area. Am I wrong on that?
Well, we, we have all the list of APNs. We didn't get letters of substantial evidence from all the property owners, so that's where we're short on.
That's what I mean.
Right. We're short, we're definitely short on the substantial evidence.
So, so I guess what I'm saying is even if we added in a little bit and subtracted a little bit on certain properties, it's not really gonna change that much of the housing element.
No, it won't.
Not the overall housing element.
Correct.
And certainly not much, I mean, to a certain degree, maybe a few numbers here and there in, in this slide, but not many.
Correct. And my, my point was that on that rezone strategy on the screen there, where we had 6,140, that's what we're trying to come back to. So no matter how we balance it out, we're trying to land back that 6,140.
Yeah. Okay. I'm not inclined to remove the reference to, to the inclusionary zoning. I think that we should do what we were talking about last meeting, which is keep it in, study it, and probably adopt it, frankly. And it's a matter of timing on the, on it. I suspect that we would need to make a decision on passing it before we would adopt the housing element. And so that would be my, at least, suggestion for now is keep it in, and we really need to bring this to a head well before we would adopt the housing element itself. My guess is that would probably be helpful for us to make that decision after we see the comments that come back from HCD. But, you know, I, I think that, I think that's probably where we're at. And then, I think I was listening, so can I ask, Ms. Brenner, when you were referencing ADUs as an overlay zone, given that we have ADU, an ADU ordinance that would allow it across the city, what was your thought process on the overlay zone issue?
My thinking was that the size of the ADUs could perhaps be adjusted to the areas in which they're included.
I think it's a matter of policy. That's a good idea. I'm not sure we need to do it as part of the housing element, but I, I think that's a good point. I mean, you could certainly see bigger ADUs up in Spineglass than in, yeah, in the flower streets. Is that your point?
That's it.
Yeah. That's a good policy for us to look at outside of the housing element anyway. That's a fair, that's a good point. So I, I just, I, I think we're stretching the 1,000 ADUs. I worry if we go to 1,500 and are told no, then we were basically coming back down to where we are now, and then we're told no again. And I'm, that's, that's why, you know, we've been able to support 1,000s. It's, it's already a pretty aggressive stretch, and it doesn't even come close to the metrics that HCD has been using on them, on the, on, you know, looking at historic production numbers. And I think, I think where we are now, I think we oughta be submitting what we've got in 30 days, so basically mid-August as a draft, and, and get the comments back and keep rolling forward. Doesn't mean we have to adopt it exactly as it is, but, and we can continue to have this discussion and debate, and we 100% will, and hopefully in the interim, we're able to get, you know, the Banning Ranch issue resolved somehow, some way, and that'll be great for everyone. But I think at this point, I, I think at this point, we oughta just take a poll and find out if we have support for moving this forward 30 days from now.
Okay. So let's poll here, and where are we, where's starting? One month delay, one month to submittal?
We need to sit again.
Yep.
Yeah, let me, let me rephrase this for just a second. I think that, I think that if there is something that happens that changes our calculations, if there is something that dramatically alters our analysis, whether it comes to Banning Ranch or, or something, anything, like where we're looking at this and you're saying, and I'm saying, I'm saying you to staff, if you look at this and say, "Hey, we need to bring this back," then I'd ask the mayor to just call a special meeting for us to have this discussion again. Absent something that would dramatically modify what we're looking at, then I think we, we oughta be, yes, it's 30 days from now. So I don't think that we would be coming back on this until we get the comments back.
Okay. Show of hands for that.
That's unanimous.
All right.
Six, zero.
And no change to ADUs, the number?
That was part of the, yeah, that was part of the polling.
Can I just say one thing? I, I go along with that. I would say, as we go forward and implement publicly our housing element once it's approved, I think we should just do a massive communication to the community to encourage and make the process of ADUs. I mean, that's obviously a more desirable housing, affordable housing unit, and to the extent that we can encourage the community, we can worry about this later. But I would like to say, let's build that number as much as we can. I mean, the existing numbers are not reflective of what the future can bring because there's so much state law that is changing, and we want to encourage it. Right up until this point, we really haven't been encouraging, other than what the state has mandated in waiving permit fees. We just did that a few months ago. So anyway, I think on the community's side, as we implement this, let's encourage people far and wide to come with us, come to us with their plans for ADUs. It could be an informal goal.
So Jim, do you need any further clarification, direction to move forward?
I think that was pretty clear, so thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would just like to say, I felt it was a really good discussion. People came with facts. We've got a really good group here, and it's exactly what we need to hear from folks. And I wish we had a bigger group because I think everyone in this room understands how important this is to our future. And we may not agree on things, but certain elements of this, but we all are in agreement of what we're trying to do is, is protect as much as we can, our city, from the impacts of what's essentially, you know, total takeover by the state in this realm. And it's, it's a frightening thing to see. So with that, again, thank you for spending your time here today and giving us your, your thoughts. It's very much appreciated. And with that, do we have public comments on agenda and non-agenda items?
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher, and I would like to speak to item C on the closed session agenda. I don't know how many of you looked at page two of the agenda. I was very pleased and want to commend staff on the new format that they are providing, where they are showing the public not just the minimum legally required statement of what the two cases are that you will be reviewing under that item, conference with legal counsel, but actually has a little paragraph explaining what, to the public, what those cases are about. I did want to point out that these two cases are, one of them is the OCOG lawsuit complaining about the county's RENA allocation. The other one is the lawsuit that Jet Suite X filed against the county, trying to defend what they claim as their right to have regularly scheduled commercial flights out the side of the normal terminal where all other carriers operate. I would point out, number one, that those are both cases that not only the council, but the public is very interested in knowing what the status of them is. And also, it's somewhat confusingly listed here as anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, when clearly, as it explains, there are two cases that are already in progress. So I am wondering, number one, is the council in closed session seriously considering joining these cases? Are you talking about filing an amicus brief? Or why is this called initiation of litigation when it's current litigation? And second, is the public at some point going to be informed about the status of these two very important cases? In particular, I'm thinking the aviation committee, as well as the city council, certainly would like to know the status of the Jet Suite X case. So are they gonna be informed at some point, and will that be a closed session discussion with them? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on agenda or non-agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Peter Putnam. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for more than 30 years. I'd like to speak on one particular issue this evening, and that is the Newport Beach Emergency Operations Plan. The city of Newport Beach has a plan for coping with emergency, emergency situation, and it's called the Emergency Operations Plan. You can read a copy at the library, or you can download a copy from the Newport Beach City website. One of the elements of the plan is the RACES program. This stands for Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service, and it's a group of amateur radio operators who are prepared to provide communications in an emergency. The Newport Beach Police Department canceled their support of this program in March of this year, after 40 years of participation, effectively editing the Emergency Operations Plan on the fly and preventing the city from fulfilling the requirements of the program. Let you ponder on the legality of all of that. I repeat my request previously presented in writing to all members of the city council and to the city manager acting as the director of emergency services. and to the city manager acting as the director of emergency services to appoint a new RACI's coordinator that can take full advantage of the group's technical capabilities and restore the missing element of the Emergency Operation Plan. Of the 34 cities in Orange County, 31 have implemented and supported the RACI's program. It's not difficult. I wish Newport Beach would comply. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm going to speak from over here. It's a better place to put my sticks here without falling. Counsel, I'm Steve Ray again, speaking to you. And I, it's about Banning Ranch, but it has nothing to do with the previous discussion. I just wanted to inform you, I had mentioned until recently I was the executive director of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. Conservancy will continue forward in its work and everything, but I wanted to let you know that we have formed a new group called the Banning Ranch Land Trust, whose goal is to plan for the future of Banning Ranch, to see to the remediation, the restoration of Banning Ranch, the conservation, long-term conservation and management of it, putting together the educational programs and the trails and all that kind of stuff that will be the future of Banning Ranch. We would like to, at some point, sit down with you to go over some of the thoughts that we have about the future of Banning Ranch and to collect some thoughts from you and impressions from you of what you might like to see, you know, from the city's perspective on Banning Ranch. So another offer I'll make to you tonight is that we would be happy to come in and have the discussion with you, give you some idea of what we're looking at in the future. This doesn't have to be right away, but just something to, you know, put in the back of your mind for future planning. And I'm sure the city manager will hopefully take that into account, too, and maybe we can work something out in the future to do that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a great offer. I know we'll take you up on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comment on agenda or non-agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, I've walked out both times when I talk about the frequency because it could fall arguably under licensed frequency, and I'm involved in telecommunications.
Hello.
Can I speak now?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Karina Dusek. I live across the street in Harborview Hills. And I'm here to show you my ham radio. I just want to say, first of all, that the RACI's people and former CERTCOMs are huge supporters of the police department and the fire department. We love our city. Many of us are CERTs, we're CERT-trained. And I just really wish that you would be able to turn on our repeaters. The reason, actually, I wish you would restore the CERTCOM program and the RACI's program, but if you can't do that, I really, really hope you can turn on our repeaters. The reason is that in Cameo shores, Cameo Highlands, and Newport Coast, we can't reach those areas with line-of-sight equipment, and we really, really need those repeaters. This microwave system that the police department has purchased, I mean, that may well be great. I don't know much about it. But I will tell you that the whole world knows that ham radio is the gold standard of emergency communications. And we were told in CERT class by Matt Brisboy, who was the leader of CERT, that most city employees, including police and fire, in the event of a disaster, would go home and check on their families first. So we have to assume that we are, will be on our own. And without these repeaters that have been turned off, it's just, I just, I'm afraid for the safety of my neighbors, myself, and all of you, since you all live in the city as well. So I'm just really hoping that you'd be able to turn on our repeaters, please. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roy Schlemmon, S-H-L-E-M-O-N. I'm a resident of Newport Beach for the last 47 years, and I'm here also to speak on behalf of the volunteers in our community, as all of you are as well, and that is the radio operators who have volunteered their time, their equipment, to help protect our city in the event, that we don't want to think about, of a natural disaster. Now, by professional training and experience, I'm a geologist, have been for many, many years, and a particular specialty is on earthquakes, landslides. And I might mention that Newport in particular, including where I live, is subject to all of these. Now, we have tsunamis. We also face a challenge of wild land fires, as you know, and we also, many of you perhaps live under the runway of John Wayne, and when that happens, and it will, we hope not, but it will sometime, that's another disaster. Now, the hams or the RACI's members here, and you've heard all about that already, I'm sure, have volunteered their time. The Newport Beach Police Department has supported the group for many years, like 40 years perhaps, and I'm sure we're all appreciative of that. We've been called out before to help, namely as spotters to radio back in using FCC-authorized frequencies on our radios, back to headquarters, back to whomever. When there have been fires, we were called out to assist, for example, Laguna Beach, when they had a massive fire some years ago. I might point out, now that Newport Beach has dropped, apparently officially, the whole RACI's program, we're one of the few cities in this county that does not have such a program. Our surrounding cities, for example, Huntington Beach and Laguna Beach, Costa Mesa, all have active programs. We get together jointly on what is called Field Day, and we practice our skills with either generators, or in my case, I use solar panels and battery and everything else that we can possibly use to communicate. You've heard the old story, the old saw, when everything else fails, it's always amateur radio. It will fail sometime. You may not need it now. We hope we don't need it in our lifetime, but I would strongly encourage you to take advantage of the volunteers, the people of this community, that volunteer to do whatever we can to support our own community and resurrect the program. The police department, we understand perfectly where their challenge is, and they perhaps don't need our support anymore, but somewhere in this city, there is some decision-maker that recognizes that volunteerism is good and should not be discouraged. And therefore, we respectfully, and I'm speaking on behalf of my colleagues, certainly request your consideration, respectfully request, to reestablish our program so that we can help protect the city when it, that time arrives. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Avery Counts. I am the constituent services manager for Orange County Second District Supervisor Katrina Foley, and I serve the beautiful city of Newport Beach. I'd like to congratulate Newport Beach on the opening of the newly renovated Upper Newport Bay Amphitheater. Thank you, Mayor Avery, for joining us for the ribbon cutting. We had a blast. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief update on the work Supervisor Foley is doing for Newport Beach. We had a board meeting at the Board of Supervisors today, which are always very lively, so that was fun. And then the county has also put together a veterans workforce development program, where if an employer hires a veteran who is seeking work, then the county will give that employer grants to help pay a portion of the wages owed to the veteran. So if there are any business members here looking to hire new employees, please contact our office for more information. Let's keep our veterans employed, folks. On Monday, our office will begin accepting applications for a District Two Arts Grant Program that will provide eligible arts-related small businesses and nonprofits a one-time grant. I'll be happy to forward that information to the city once it becomes available. Supervisor Foley and our team would also like to invite all Newport Beach residents to join our upcoming events. July 15th at 6:00 PM, we're hosting a town hall to commemorate our first 100 days in office and give an update on everything our office has accomplished in such a short amount of time for Newport Beach and for all the other cities in our district. On August 12th at 6:00 PM, we are planning a community workshop on the county's redistricting process at Orange Coast College with live streaming options available. Please save the date for that informative meeting. And thank you again for your time. Please feel free to contact our office if there's anything we can do to be of assistance. You can email me directly at Avery, spelled just like the mayor's last name, dot Counts, C-O-U-N-T-S, at o c gov dot com, or give me a call on my cell, 714-559-8364. Good night, Newport.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Being none, Mr. Harp?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. The city council will not be meeting this evening regarding agenda item number 4A, which is the labor negotiations with the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Lifeguards and Newport Beach Police Association. The city council will be meeting in closed session regarding real property negotiations with Mr. Lucky regarding the use of a portion of the public right-of-way adjacent to 929 Zurich Circle and 944 via Lido Nord. And they will also be meeting with legal counsel regarding the Orange County Council of Governments lawsuit against the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which is challenging the regional housing need assessment for the Southern California Association of Governments region. And the council will also be meeting with legal counsel regarding the lawsuit filed by JSX against the county of Orange, which relates to JSX operations and John Wayne Airport. And those are both set forth on the agenda under items 4B through C.
Ms. Leung, do you have a recommendation as to how long we're going to take in there? When we should return?
30 minutes, do you think?
Seven?
So 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, great.
I think would be good, yes.
Thank you. All right. We're recessed until 7:00 o'clock. Thank you.